The overview committee, in fact the last, if I'm correct.
Yes.
The last committee of scrutiny and policy overview of this council. In order to assist in the process this evening, I must ask everyone to ensure, Simon. Everyone to ensure mobile phones are either switched off or on silent mode. We would be grateful if you would remain quiet whilst the meeting is in progress. I would like to remind everyone present that this meeting will be filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet and will be capable of repeated viewing. If you are seated in the chamber, it is possible that the cameras will capture your image and by your presence, you are deemed to consent to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting and/or training purposes. Finally, there are no planned fire drills for this evening. If the fire alarm sounds, please evacuate the building immediately via the emergency exit. Thank you. So, agenda item one. Let's have a look, so where we are. Apologies for absence.
Apologies received, Chairman from Council of Bath.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, item two.
None received, Chairman.
Okay, minutes of the previous meeting, is it your wish that we sign off the, to confirm as correct, as a correct record, the minutes of the last meeting held on the 29th January? Thank you. Agenda item four, BCP Council 29, 2019, 2020 budget and consolidated medium term financial plan, MTFP update. Vice Chairman, you asked for this to be brought to the committee, so I shall pass over to you to lead on this matter.
Thank you, Chairman. The reason that I asked for this to come to the committee is that it is going to, what was in the budget was going to affect everybody in Christchurch. And it isn't something that the Borough Council can do anything about because of course it is the responsibility of the new unitary council. But it's our job and it's one that I think over the years we have done very thoroughly, and with your permission, Chairman, I'll say more about that later, that we have done very thoroughly and we have a duty to have a look at this and to see not so much going through every detailed line of expenditure and line of proposed income, but the broad brush sweep of this budget and particularly how it will affect us in comparison to the other authorities. Now, if you remember, Chairman, going back to 2016, we had some examples then of how the figures were worked out and I think from the day that those figures came out, we have had difficulties or we've had concerns over them. First of all, we were concerned, I think, over the very high, the £150 notional precept put in for parish council or town council. Secondly, we were concerned over the then planned 20 years harmonisation and we were also concerned about the, shall we say, the lack of skill that seemed to be apparent in the other two authorities. Now, we're both county councils, Chairman, and you know that for the past few years, the county council has put up its council tax, even though in the first couple of years we could have taken advantage of the government's freeze grant. We decided as a prudent county council that this was not a good move because the government had said that these figures would not be embodied into the council tax. If we took the freeze grant, the base rate would still, the base figure would be what it was in 2011. And we realised that if, when it became necessary to increase council tax and we'd frozen it for a number of years, a very big jump would be necessary to get to where we were, where we needed to be. And the same process was decided on by the Borough Council, that again, we would not take the freeze grant. We took it for two years when they said it was going to be embodied and then when they said, no, we can't promise that it will be embodied, we said, no, we won't take this, we will increase our council tax by the required, by the maximum amount. And so Dorset's financial position, although difficult, they were looking forward and saying, well, actually get through 2021 and we'll be all right, that they will not need to make the absolutely swinging cuts in staff to balance it. Now, whether or not that prediction is accurate, we remains to be seen, but at least they were starting from a reasonable base. In Christchurch, because of the work that has been done and because of the responsible and prudent way in which we've looked after our money, we were able to say, well, you know, we are a debt free council, we go into this new authority as a debt free council, we go into it with a council with reserves and that are no, neither of the other, our other two partners, conquerors, whichever you overlords, whichever way you look at it, can say that. So let's have a look briefly at two of the crunching points on this budget. It is illegal for an authority to set different rates of council tax for different parts of that authority. Now, every other unitary authority, and I've been looking at unitary authorities and their formation, arguing against them, except in minority limited cases when it's gone the other way, it's not been a growing together, it's been a pushing apart, as has happened in Somerset, when it broke away down to North Somerset, as happened in this area when Bournemouth and Poole said, oh no, we don't want to be ruled by Dorset, we want to be on our own. Well, what it meant was that they wanted to call the shots and then they wanted to take over others. They tried in 96, they failed and they're back again now and they've succeeded. Now, they cannot set, except with government permission, a differential tax rate. So the council tax rate has to be harmonised and here is the really key bit and what I think is the most deplorable tactic that has been used. Look, Mr Beazley is saying, your council tax has gone down very slightly from where it was last year under Dorset. What he hasn't said is that we here have, that is simply because we've been prudent. Dorset's been prudent and Dorset's increased its council tax. So where the level Dorset is now is where Bournemouth and Poole ought to be and because they've got more people to care for, more elderly population, so on and so forth, it's a lot lower than it should be. Far be it from me, Chairman, to say anything on the lines of they didn't want to do it because they wanted to go to the electorate in 2015, as saying, we've not increased your council tax over the last four years. But Bournemouth and Poole are in a mess. Poole is shutting all its public toilets. Bournemouth, well, I'm sure there's will talk about wonders like the Bank of Bournemouth. So effectively, they haven't been able to get away with their 20 years, they tried for 10 years. RNP protested, what has come out with is a seven year harmonisation period. So in seven years' time, the council tax paid all over Bournemouth and Poole and Christchurch will be level. But during that time, we in Christchurch will be paying more for the same services, we will be subsidising effectively Camford Cliffs, we will be subsidising West Cliff in Bournemouth. My county council residents in Sommerford, who heaven knows, I've had somebody on the phone today saying how difficult they found to make it balance, are going to be paying for those people in those nice several million pound homes down in Sandbanks. That's not good. So, Chairman, what I would like to do is really fourfold. I'd like to say that we condemn the shadow authority because it sets a budget that will cost bandy taxpayers in Christchurch £150 more than it will goes in Poole. And also, councillor Neil is reminding me, and I hope he will speak to this, that the capital expenditure, what we can expect to get out of Bournemouth, and let's not fool around and say Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole, we all know it's run by Bournemouth, are going to say that how much are we going to get out of the capital spending? This was a point which we've all made in the fight for this, that yes, they may well get more government grants, maybe pay over to Bournemouth, Christchurch and Poole council, but how much of that will come here to Christchurch? And the answer, I fear, is not a lot. So, secondly, just for comparison, because there'll be people who say, well, look, it can't be done, you know, you've got these big discrepancies. Dorset Shadow Authority are having a day one harmonisation and they are much, much wider variations between on the one hand, East Dorset and on the other hand, North Dorset, very big variations, yet they're saying, we're going for day one harmonisation. Now, the third thing I'd like to do is to congratulate our leader and deputy leader, councillor Fagin, councillor Jamieson, they've opposed harmonisation over time, since it started out, they've fought for it and each time they've been turned down. They've fought for it in the, the joint committee, they've been turned down, they've fought for it in the executive, they've been turned down. And now they fought for it the other day at the council meeting and they didn't get anywhere. And yet we had the sort of the deathbed conversions of some of our councillors here, I'm sorry to say, who are saying, well, I didn't vote for it, no, but you were told at the beginning that there was going to be a 20 year period and you fought, you fought to maintain, you fought to take Christchurch into this system, knowing full well that it was going to be a 20 year period of harmonisation at maximum. And those who did that, I've been accused of having to square my conscience with what's happened, those of you who, those councillors who voted for it and supported it all the way through, they're the ones that have to worry about their conscience. And also, we have to thank those two, those councillors who introduced the unsuccessful amendment to bring in, councillor Hillyard, to force a day one harmonisation and that really flushed people out. And finally, because we must remember that it has been a long fight and even if it's been unsuccessful, the effort put into it deserves recognition, that we thank those members and officers who since November 2017 have done their best to ensure that Christchurch would not be penalised by local government reorganisation and regrets that their efforts have been through no fault of their own unsuccessful. Chairman, I'll sum up. What you've got here is, has much moral justification as the highwayman who jumped out in front of the coach and said, stand and deliver.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure if that's summing up.
It is.
That's it.
That's it, that's factual.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chairman, for that presentation. I must, I think it would be appropriate for councillor Hillyard and myself to say a few words about what happened last week, was it last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was last week, see.
It was last week.
Just seemed like a lifetime ago. And, and I asked the question of the legality of what they were doing, in other words, because government says you can do it, doesn't make it legal. So I asked the question purely on the legality, is this legal to do this? And the answer came back, yes, it is, and I quote, that it is under part four of the Local Government Finance Act 1992, an authority undergoing restructuring is allowed to calculate different basic amounts of council tax for its predecessor areas for up to seven years as part of a process of equalisation. And that was the answer to the question on legality. And that was followed up by councillor Hillyard, who put forward an amendment, I'm not quite sure which order it all came in now, thinking back, but if you'd like to sort of pass comment on what you said.
Thank you, Chairman. So it was an amendment to the recommendation two. So recommendation two was to say, Christchurch council tax in effect would be frozen, Bournemouth's would be increased 2.4 and Poole's 2.99. I and fellow independent councillors said, no, we can use a facility called the notional, what's it called, alternative notional amount, which the government had laid out, so we had that and the finance director of BCP and his team were very helpful to work the new recommendation up to show that everyone would be paying this notional amount of 1445.61. It would mean, instead of an increase of 2.99 for Poole, it'd be 6.4% and instead of 2.4 for Bournemouth, it would be, I think, 2.9%. And it was interesting, we had a seminar last week and councillor Janet Walton, the leader of the Shadow Authority, we were hearing from the chief exec with his initial thoughts on his few weeks in his role and councillor Walton said, some of the decisions we will need to make going forward will need political courage. And this harmonisation vote on the 21st exactly was that, it was, yes, it's fair, it would be a fair start for all, but obviously Bournemouth and Poole residents would have to suffer that, but in the long run, they would be better off, you would hope. So that would have been courage, but as I said, we gave it a good shot, we had a few supporters, but not the majority.
I think it's fair to say, we had over 20, over 20 and had there been other people, had the leader of the council, for example, been able to be there, but he was otherwise engaged and other members being there, you know, we would have got closer to 30, 30 votes. So it wasn't, it wasn't absolutely lost and not everybody in the chamber agreed with the proposal because we had, I'm not quite sure how many of us there were there, that did, no, I mean, how many, how many, how many from Christchurch? So if you, if you break it down, I think there was, not everybody voted for it, not every, sorry, not all people from Christchurch voted against it, some abstained. And had we, had we all been there, had we all voted against it, it could have been fairly close, too close to call, I think, but, but it was where it was. So, so it wasn't everybody in the chamber, apart from us, who were against what, what we were saying, I think, you know, stand up and be brave and do what you know is right sort of comment was, was, you know, hopefully did help. Did you want to come back?
Yeah, I'd just say that for the next six or seven years, the comment was made at budget time, we're going to have exactly the same, well, hopefully, Christchurch councillors will fight that amendment each year until we do get harmonisation and again, hopefully the planned additional grants of being a larger authority will come in and again, we can speak to the officer and hopefully that some of that money, yes, it will be put to services in good use, but also will help with harmonisation from a much shorter period.
So we come, come back to the, sorry, I'll make a pardon, sorry.
I was going to mention that I also mentioned, I took some figures from councillor Hillyard's proposal there and it was working out something like nine, the most, we're working out a 91 pence per week, which I was relating to a cup of coffee, well, not even a cup of coffee. And I think that probably helped an awful lot because whilst you're talking about percentages, nobody actually knew how much money they were talking about. But when you consider that we're the poorest of our residents, we'll be paying something like £4 extra each time now, because they're, they're not being subsidised the eight percent of what they used to pay towards their council tax, they're now having to pay from day one, which could have been harmonised as well over two years, but that wasn't accepted and they'd be paying £4, you know, and it does seem to be still unfair on Christchurch. Can I continue? Because I also related to the budget, the capital expenditure and the capital expenditure, I don't have the figures as I had on last week, but the capital expenditure for 19, which has already been approved now by BCP, was Poole was going to spend 55 million, Bournemouth was going to spend 50 million, these are approximates, and Christchurch 1.4 million in the capital budget. Now, there was also a DCC, Dorset County Council, commitment of seven, seven million something, it wasn't very much, seven million, not much over the seven million. So altogether, if you said that we had eight and a half million out of the budget where the other two are getting 50 plus million, it also shows an unfairness that they're not spending the money, even though we're paying the most, that we are smaller, but we are only about a third of the size of Bournemouth. And if they're spending 50 odd million, then you would have expected that we should have had 12, 13, maybe 14 million opposed to the 8 million if you take Dorset County Council commitment.
So I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that some, some of that capital spend gets spent in, in services within Christchurch, looking at things like buses. Yeah, yeah, but looking forward, you know, the, the bus infrastructure and so on and so forth.
Yeah, that's been proven now, but I think that is because unfortunately, we only had one person out of the seven or eight that was on the, the subcommittees and we only, because of our numbers, we were only allowed one person, it was either our leader or the deputy leader was there and each time they got overruled and so, you know, that's going to happen quite frequently, I think.
Indeed. Okay, so we have a proposal. Is there any further debate? Do we have a second? Oh, sorry, councillor Mrs Jones.
I'd just like to say, Mister Chairman, that for me, yes, we talk about legality, but there is also this case of morality and it seems immoral to have a situation where we are forced into paying so much more than the others. It's not a moral thing, especially as we are in effect an unwilling bride, forced into a marriage. Because yes, the then leader of the day, in the very early stages of exchanging a handshake, wanted this union, but the council very soon showed that by a substantial majority, it did not and the people of Christchurch showed. And the people of Christchurch showed by referendum that they did not want this. And all right, there will be some people who will say, oh, well, eighty four percent of what? But have a look at the figures that you get when people go to vote in individual elections. You never get a hundred percent turnout. And if you get the turnout that was got for the referendum, it was exceptionally good. And everywhere you go, people say, this is an unfair situation. Eighty four percent of us told the secretary of state that we did not want this. He had said, I would like to see the issue of consent, which seemed to apply to us. When it actually came to the point of making his decision, he decided it included all the rest of Dorset and particularly our two partners on the coast. Well, that was not the impression that he gave in the first instance. And I feel, Mr Chairman, that we have been very much let down by the government, by the minister, and by these two partners that we have been joined with. And I don't think it's going to be conjugal bliss. I think, Mr Chairman, members, we're in a situation where we're regarded as a cash cow. Remember, Poole said, oh, we won't do this union unless we have Christchurch. So they actually wanted us and said it was on that condition. So here we are with our dowry, being pushed into something and told, yes, but you're not an equal partner, find your place and we may give out infant money towards your projects. I'm chairman of the Red House Museum Committee. And it seems to be that for the next year, they will be paying the same amount that has been paid by Dorset at Christchurch. But goes the addenda, of course, we don't know what will happen in the future. It may be that steps will have to be taken. Now, that doesn't give any assurance that the concerns of Christchurch are going to be foremost in this, as councillor Neil said. You don't, you've got all this money being poured into projects in Poole and Bournemouth and yet not into Christchurch. They want us, but they want us on their own terms. And councillor Abbott today, representing Sommerford, where you have some of the most deprived areas in Christ, in Dorset. Here we are subsidising those who are in million pound houses. When I say million, millions of pounds. So you get one member who says, I'm a low tax Tory, living in a two and a half million pound house. Well, we don't have two and a half million pound houses in Sommerford. And those people have to work extremely hard to pay their council tax. And they object very strongly to the fact that they are paying in relation to the rest, much more than the fair share. And so, Mr Chairman, I would support this resolution. I do much, I thank the members and officers who've sat through countless debates. The officers have had to cope with this subject for well over two years. But it's something, Christchurch has always fought, fought for freedom. And now we're being shackled into a relationship that is not giving us freedom, but is serfdom as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you for that very eloquent speech, councillor Mrs Jones. My, my, my view on this is, I, I understand absolutely the principle on which this is based. I, I would perhaps slightly tug in cheek, take issue on your assertion that you never get a hundred percent in any election or, or, or voting system. Because in some parts of the world, you get something like a hundred and sixty percent. But fortunately, that is not here. And it's interesting when you listen to the morality points that you very eloquently brought forward, which we have been talking about for years and years and years. And that was thrown back at us, wasn't it, on last week? What day was it last week? Yeah, we, we, yeah, we before. That, that how dare we suggest that people in a different authority should pay more? What gives us the moral right to say what they should be paying in Poole? So the morality argument works for everybody as, as they, as they see it from their perspective. My cons, my only concern to the proposer is the, the term condemn, which I would see as, I would sooner see something like object strongly to, rather than condemn, if I was going to give support to this, to this proposal. And just wondered what the proposer thinks.
I was just going to say that the feeling is, from Bournemouth and Poole's point of view, is that they've given us a reduction in our band D rate, which they have, it's eight pounds a year. Whereas we're talking about the money that is the other side, where they ought to be paying a lot more per week, you know. But it's not, it's not, not a sound argument, eight pounds is a derisory amount.
But I, but I also think that year on year, as we go to all the different, those of us who are elected to the new council, go to, yeah. I'm assuming that some of us around the table will, will, will be elected, those who put themselves forward, to argue for lower spend across the piece, so that there is more surplus, so that we can bring the harmonisation forward to two years or, or, or closer. Because, so, you know, when we say there is no harmony in, in, in this, you're absolutely right. And, and I think that, you know, for the, for the sake of what they're trying to do, they have, they have really sort of not done themselves any favour, because the battle will be quite vehement until such times as harmonisation is achieved. So, David. I beg your pardon, Janet.
We're talking about harmonisation and the fact they won't do it for the council tax. There is another point with the benefit system, they've very cleverly harmonised the, is it the cap on the benefits for help with the tax? Yeah, it's only, I don't know the figures or anything on that, but it needs pointing out, they can harmonise that, which means that our poorer people will now be paying more from their benefits than we've had before. It's, we were five percent, they're about twenty, aren't they? I don't know. Right, yeah.
Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I thank everybody for their contributions? I think there's been a, it's a pity that we didn't have some of the absentees here. But this bears out, Chairman, what we who have fought to keep Christchurch special, have been saying from day one. This is done to save Bournemouth's neck. It is not done to help Christchurch. It is done as a get out of jail free card for Bournemouth. Chairman, I take your, I'll just make one point in answer to yours regarding, or to councillor Neil regarding the reduction. In line with our consistent proposals, this is a response from councillor Beesley to the question I was unable to ask. In line with our consistent commitment, the proposal is an eight pounds eight to six reduction in the combined DCC and CBC charge to Christchurch residents of one six oh seven to one five nine eight three oh. This reduction reflects functions transferred to the new parish and town councils. In other words, it isn't a reduction. It's only because our successor council here, and whoever's name is going on that board next, I got, and at least there will be a name on those boards. It's only because we fought for a town council to be elected by the people of this borough that we have the, that councillor Beesley's reduction that they promoted and said, look, you're getting a whole eight quid, actually, you're not. A year, you're paying it to the town council, admittedly, you'll get more value for it because it will be spent in Christchurch. Chairman, I also note your concerns over the wording condemns. For the sake, and I hope we could have a unanimous motion, which will be published, it will be in the minutes that we will, and it will, I hope, be sent to the new authority, just as other scrutiny meetings are sent. I'm happy to change that to very strongly resent the action of the authority. Would that mean with the consent of my second?
Deeply resents.
Deeply resents, deeply resents.
Thank you, Chairman. So I actually think that we're, we're coming some way towards harmonisation in this, in the chamber this evening. So I would, with that amendment, are you happy with the amendment? With that amendment, I propose to go to the vote. Okay, we're ready. All those in favour? Thank you, that is unanimous.
Could I ask, is, there's an executive, shadow executive meeting on the twelfth of March. Will this, minutes of this meeting go to that? Is that normal procedure?
I don't believe we would normally circulate the minutes to the shadow executive committee. I, my understanding was that previous minutes have gone to the shadow scrutiny committee, but
Are you, Chairman, if, I would be more than happy for these minutes to go to the shadow executive committee as well as to the shadow scrutiny committee. And I think it might serve as a correction, I believe that there's a Scottish regiment has the motto ninety two, no dead yet. And I think that might make a point to them. Scrutiny, that's shadow scrutiny tomorrow.
Okay, put that to one side, because we've, we've, we've gone to the vote. We're all content, I propose to close the meeting at this point.
Chairman, before you do, I would, with your permission, like to say one or two words.
Please do.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, this is the last meeting unless something incredibly untoward happens of the scrutiny committee. I have been a member of scrutiny committee since its very first meeting way back in two thousand.
When I was the.
When you were the vice chairman, but then you've had a few years off. And I would say, in that time, scrutiny even, as shown even in a small authority, even an authority that operates under the fourth option, we can make a difference. We have looked at a lot of things. I think it's partly due to this committee that we have the grass area on the section one of Sixland just outside, which I think was in the second term, the council. We've had, been very fortunate in that we've had a number of very gifted and eloquent chairmen who have committed to the scrutiny process. And that we've had officers who have been equally committed and have been very, very much committed as well to doing their best for Christchurch. Chairman, I have said on innumerable occasions, scrutiny asks the questions. We have asked a lot of awkward questions and I think all the members here and all the officers can be pleased with what we have done. We were a new committee, very new idea when we started as a scrutiny committee. It may be that our successor town council at least might wish to consider whether that it too might. Because the wide ranging ability of the scrutiny committee to investigate anything that affects the residents is something that might wish to be continued. I think scrutiny, those of us who were more traditional, regretted the idea of a committee that wouldn't actually decide something, but would only analyse and pass on. I think we've shown our worth. And Chairman, you've been now here for two years, can I express our thanks to you and to the officers and to Lee who isn't here, but is probably hiding away somewhere? If you haven't locked up in the dungeons yet, and thank you all.
Thank you. And may, may I, as the chairman of the committee, sort of pass on my thanks to all of the officers who have looked after us so admirably in the short term that I have been the chairman, Fred.
As the only independent person here today, I'd like to actually second that, if it is a proposal, because we've worked really incredibly well, I've been a member of this twelve years now. And it has seen lots and lots of issues come forward. It's been very proactive for the community and I do hope that they do progress into the town.
Okay, I think we can all go home now. Thank you very much. The meeting is closed, I've already closed it.